Good evening. I'd like to call the September 12th, 2023 meeting of the Culver Town Council to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind people this meeting is being recorded. Your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast and recorded and rebroadcast on the town's YouTube channel. Secondly, I know there's a lot of interest around town, but this is not going to be a forum for the library. If you have a cellphone or anything electronic, if you please turn it off at this time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavinger?
Present.
Here.
Bill Ham?
Here.
Richard G.
Here.
Rich West.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of council minutes. Everybody had a chance to look and over the minutes of the meeting two weeks ago. It's been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Next, the financial report. Everybody had a chance to look at the financial report. Karen, do you have any comments? Okay. A motion to approve the financial report, please.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Ham, a second please.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Githens. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Surf Internet.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Gene. I'm the CEO and the shareholder in Surf. And first of all, I just want to thank you all for inviting us into your into your town. I was just looking at my email and Jenny and I emailed for the first time two years ago this week to talk about this project. So it's quite an honor to, in under two years, have gone from having it be just an idea to actually be done. And we're really excited, but I think we've connected most of the town offices. I was talking to Pat on the way here and we have two more locations to connect that are requiring like going under a road or a sidewalk or something. But we just want to thank you for allowing us to be part of your community. We've been part of some of the festivals and events. And Scott Franco here is part of our business development team and we want to just sort of share with you. We had something made for the town to celebrate the town of Culver becoming a surf gig community. This is made by a guy in Elkhart that does race maps for like triathlons and marathons and stuff. And we thought, how cool would it be to sort of tie the beautiful lake to the community? And so we just want to honor you all and thank you for letting us be part of the community. And really, we're just here to answer any questions and say hello and stay engaged and connected. So anybody have any questions? Don't want to tie up the meeting.
Anyone in the audience have any questions for them?
I don't know the number, but it's in the 28 to 32% range. And typically when we build out a community like this, in the first year, we try to be in the 20 to 24% range. And if you think about it, we're in the first few months. So that's pretty amazing to be almost a 30% in a couple of months. So thanks for asking.
I've had, I've had some people that live outside of the town of Culver ask if you were going, I guess it would be west and north of Culver.
So the, the deal that we worked out with the town was to cooperate with Rochester Telephone and Marshall County Fiber. And so we've been very careful to make sure that we stretch the dollars as far as possible. And they're basically going north and west. And we just approved, and I think we're going to start any day, maybe it already started, it hasn't been down there. But where our fiber ends on the south side of the lake, we're going to go about another 3,000 feet or so to connect a bunch of residents who asked us to come down that way.
Okay.
And we are applying for about $5 million with next level connect grant money to try to connect as many other people in the area that Marshall County and Rochester aren't doing. That will go out to bid in January of next year. So our intention is to keep trying to get as many of your underserved in the region as we can with the dollars that are available.
You're getting hurt. Extension in town at the south end goes to the south end of the town limits?
We stopped it outside the town limits and then we went about another 2,000 feet. And then, then another batch of Aver sent us a, like basically like, please come, here's 16 names that wanted. So we, okay, we'll go. So probably what will happen is we'll just keep going all the way around the lake.
See, that goes down past the west circle and pick up on that, on the west shore.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
That's, that's.
It's outside the town.
That's it, heading down to the public land here. Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions from the jump?
Can we get a picture real quick of the thing? Did you guys set time for that?
Sure.
Somebody in the audience could grab a.
There, you can take my spot.
How about you guys, how about you do that?
We all got to be in the picture.
Karen, you need to be in this picture.
Well, thank you all. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Can you believe it? Under, under a year since we did this, we are done. Thanks. Appreciate you.
It really is a good service, you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're trying.
I've got it at the house and I tell you, and one thing I will say, I had probably headed a month and it went down for a day. And, you know, I called and sure enough, I got a $5 credit on my next month's bill. So thank you very much.
Listen, we're not perfect. We're human.
Well, I don't, it wasn't your fault that it went down, but thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, everybody. See ya.
Next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Commission appointments. Okay, so my understanding is that they, I have one appointment and the council has another appointment?
Yeah, Mr. President, as part of the Dunes Housing Project, the economic development incentive deal that's going on, part of this program and plan needs to be approved by the Economic Development Commission, which has been pretty much inactive for a number of years. The county council appointed Ms. Lunetta, as I understand it, at the first of the year. The previous appointments were Kevin Overmeyer and Jonathan Lice. So obviously Jonathan is not able to do that. And so the, at this point, at this juncture, the president of the council has an appointment to the EDC and the council has an appointment to the EDC. We would really need to have those appointments made. So the process should be a nomination of the person and then the approval of that nomination by the council. And then we can get those people set up for that EDC meeting to do their thing with the Dunes Housing Project.
I'm going to nominate Mark Demore Jr.
Please put out your applications.
We did. We received one. One for Mr. Chris, Mark Demore.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the names of the people who apply for it on the record. Sorry.
May I have a motion for Mark Demore, please?
So move.
Second. Moved by Mr. West, seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Council's appointment?
I would like to appoint our current town manager, Kevin Dante.
Next one is the president's appointment. Corrected and just. No, he didn't.
I just appoint.
He did. Yes.
A motion to approve it.
No, now I need a motion to approve Mr., for Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Special event permit.
I have to. I've got a special event for September 16th from 1 to 3 o'clock. It's a historical presentation, a reenactment. It's going to be conducted at Culver Masonic Cemetery. It is the Culver Union Township Library, Culver, Indiana. It's a sponsoring organization. Basic description, it's characterizing several very famous people in the Masonic Cemetery and they have it all set up. It looks, everything approved and waiting your signature. Any other details? Any questions?
Any questions on the antiquarian?
I would say from the application from the antiquarian.
Mr. West moves.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Githens. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The second permit requested tonight is for October 13th, 14th, and 15th. It will be Fall Fest. It's over the course of the weekend. 500 guests, obviously located Main Street, Madison, New East, Washington. Looks like the paperwork is in order. Andrew is here tonight.
I also brought some copies of the schedule if you guys were in checks.
By yourself, please.
Yeah, my name's Andrea.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this year for Fall Fest, we just want to reestablish the purpose of the festival and make it more meaningful for our main street by supporting local businesses and encouraging visitors and residents alike to shop local and experience all of our local offerings all year round. Usually around October, November, things slow down for our main street. So we're building up around Fall Fest by adding in a few events on Main Street. On Friday, we're going to have a more like family and kid friendly focus. We ordered a boogie night, smores, and some relay races. And on Saturday, we have other events going on all day, including bringing back our beloved history hayrides. And we'll have a live band beer garden. And there will also be a face painter and, like I mentioned, a few different kids activities. On Sunday, we'll have a very casual 5K, followed by yoga. And in between those two will be a church service on Main Street. And then we're having, for the first time, the Marshall County Church Orchestra perform on Main Street as well. So a lot of fun things. And like I said, if you have any questions, I also brought a few copies of that schedule and a description of our goals for this year and a little bit about the event. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Also have them down attached to everything you can see.
Yep.
Is the section of Main Street closed for?
Yes.
Yeah. Same as usual?
Yes.
Barriers in place.
The motion to approve Fall Fest.
Still moved.
Been moved by Mr. Charlie.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I approved.
That is it for the special events.
Okay. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2023-017. Then we'll go to amend the salary ordinance for the year 2023. Karen?
Basically, we're changing the pay for where the town marshals include stipends for overtime hours work. And so that would be any overtime, any hours worked over 84 hours in a two-week period. These changes are to be effective with a pay period beginning September 11th. And then amendments concerning the town marshal table expire October 22nd, 2023, unless otherwise extended by a vote of the town council property expiration. So I do have marked on my agenda for that meeting prior to that to reevaluate.
Daniel?
Nope, that's it.
Council discussion?
We approve the amended salary ordinance 2023-017.
West movement, seconded by Mr. Githens. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Suspend the rules and pass on second and third reading.
Been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Mr. Ham to suspend the rules. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed. Next on the agenda is Marshall County Crossroads. Mr. Osterborn?
This is my way of update. I would say that meeting schedule, the week on Thursday of what we call the Collaborative Council, that is the group, a large group of civic organizations and leaders from around Marshall County coming together to look at ways to bring the Marshall County Crossroads organization aligned strategically with the Marshall County Economic Development Corporation, leadership network, the continuing education operation. So that group, subset of that group will actually be together tomorrow with the Lake House Grill for lunch and lunching hosted by the Economic Development Corporation. As far as the stellar label projects for Marshall County Crossroads, you can go all the way up to Bremen and see the Jackson Street project getting underway, creating a lot of. It'll be a nice outdoor market, kind of farmer's market area. They're converting it into a block street concept for a outdoor entertainment venue as part of that as well. Kevin can update better than I can on the housing, but it looks like it's coming together well there in Plymouth and underway in the past. Anything more you want to add about that?
No, we're looking at being done by the end of the year. We're already starting weaning on some of the facilities in Plymouth, so it's awfully good start.
We've been asking various towns for funding for this one Marshall County organization that is the, you know, coming together of crossroads. And EDC, you have that probably request in front of you to consider as part of your budget and report that. And we have discussed it with every town around Marshall County and we've got no favorable response. We don't have a firm commitment set from, that no one's running something for it. That's what we stand.
Marty, what's in it for us?
Well, I think all you got to do is look outside the door and see it, right? If you've got, you know, trails running through town here, you've got a huge suburban park that, you know, I can't walk past it without seeing kids playing in that playground. The beach lodge renovation, Cavalier Park, I mean, these are all stellar projects. And those all came about because of a group of volunteers that came together to chase the grant money and the designation. And that group's been together since 2015 here in Culver, right? And they're getting tired. We can't continue this work now that, now that economic development and quality of life have come together. It's the same idea. It's no, you're no longer build a spec building, attract an employer, and then hope that employees follow. What you do is you can improve the quality of life for town. You attract residents to that town and then businesses come in from there. So, so amenities like our trails, like parks, those are things that are economic development ideas now, not things that are just nice to have. And, and if, when economic development and, and planning, town planning comes together like that, you need to, you need to look at it differently than we have in the past. It's no longer volunteer idea. We need to staff it up with the full-time executive directors. We need to organize with committees geared toward talent attraction and business retention and continuing education and line up with those organizations at the, at the regional level, primarily south end in Elkhart, that regional partnership. We want to organize so we kind of match up better with them because when we're aligned with them, then we can work better with them on obtaining ready grant money.
How much are you asking for?
We're asking for $20,000 from the Culver Town Council.
Yeah.
Jenny is online and wanted to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we've been presenting to the other communities. I presented to Plymouth and got very favorable response from the city council. One of the other benefits that we want to provide with this unified organization is grant services. We're finding that a lot of the individual communities are having to undergo, you know, all this grant writing all of the time. And these larger grants like Ready, like Stellar, Regional Cities, those are huge undertakings. And now they depend on a regional planning team because the state agencies have moved to regional grants instead of individual communities. So that's one of the services we're going to provide as part of our agreement with the communities. And we think that's a really important service because there isn't a single entity that helps with those. And we, we feel like you need a paid person overseeing this unified group as well as a grant services person. So those are some of the positions we're looking at, Bill, that would provide a return on investment to the communities. We also ran the numbers on the stellar investment, the COVID grants that we did and Ready. And it comes out that you get about an 80% return on investment for the dollars invested. And we think that's pretty, pretty good return for a group of volunteers. And we're, we're trying to imagine what we could do if we had paid personnel.
Thank you.
That's, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Karen, do we have a budget?
I brought it to you all when we were wrapping up the budget process and there was no movement. So there is a specific place. If it's something that you want to commit to, we'll have to look.
Okay.
Because I filed, I, I submitted my budget based on the last meeting. So, I mean, it's not, it's not final approval, but the numbers are there.
Do we still have money? Do we still have money aside that we were going to use for Blue Zones?
That's tied up in the 2023 budget right now. So I think what Marty's asking is a place for the 2024 budget. So you're looking at appropriation. Is that right? Because of 2024. So you're looking at next year's budget and finding a place for it. Again, you know, if it's something that you want to commit to, Bill's favorite word, I'll make it work, but, you know, you don't need to, I wish you would have taken action earlier.
Council, what's the consensus? Rich?
I recognize value in the project. I was concerned about our, weren't projected deficit also at the same time. And, you know, I think if, again, I think that there's tremendous value in it. I recognize, you know, what Marty and Jenny have said in terms of the return and all of the other projects we see around us, the strategy that Marty talks about as far as quality of life and quality of place being the magnet that attracts people and businesses to move here. And so I think that there is definitely an economic return on this. So I guess I, I would like to see if we can find the money.
Bill?
I agree with Rich. I mean, we got a deficit going into '24 and we've got other irons in the fire. And this is just one of them. I have to say that it's not important.
Valley? I think looking at most of the, I know that if it's not in the budget, sorry that it didn't get put in. Because a lot of it is return on the investment. You know, if you support that, then your chances of getting, getting assistance with grants is a lot greater. So I, I'm in favor of try and find, you know, the dollars.
Bill?
Yeah, I agree with everyone else. Money is tight. And I think that we just see what Karen can find, if, if anything, we don't know yet. And I think, I don't think we can move on it tonight.
Well, I think it's a worthwhile project. That's just my opinion, but per pluses and minuses, I guess I could entertain a motion to approve the $20,000.
I think we wanted to move that we explore how we can fund the $20,000. I think that there are some, you know, some tentative things we've talked about in terms of shifting some expenses to, well, for things like the patrol car and things like that. So I do want to make a motion that we explore the option because of the value of the program.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's explore where we can find it, Karen. Thank you.
I just, I gave you a list, so.
I know.
A bunch of time. I had it on there and we could have saved a little bit of time.
Well, we owe you.
I'm with it.
Not that I'm, I'm supportive, but there's a process.
Right. Next is the Dunes Update. Mr. Dante?
I'm happy to currently report that we're, we don't have an update yet. We're moving forward this week and we're hoping that at the end of the month, we'll have an update for you in terms of some details that we're going to be discussing in the next two weeks. That's where we're at. No update, but we are working on it.
All right. Anything else? Tom Andrew report?
No, I've got my department heads here that need to talk, so I'm going to let them talk. But department, or the town manager is still learning. He's happy to learn. I've had good interaction with the different department heads. Realize that one of our greatest assets are people that are here. Moving forward with that. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Department head to report. AMS. Anybody reporting here for AMS? Anybody online from AMS? Fire.
We got two things to bring up. The last meeting I had, Bill Caden, Mike, for some of my guys to take dive training. And just so you know, we have a, had two weekend class that they donate their time. Four of them became certified tenders for diving and five of them became certified divers. We don't use this a lot in the lake, but when we need it, these are the guys that are going to do. They spend a lot of free time on this and so that's going to reflect somewhere in my budget because I'm going to end up having to buy more gear. I won't buy them gear until they're certified. And when they are, then they have to show the need and show that they're going to be moving on with that instead of diving to get certified and go to Florida, you know, something like that. Kind of, they have to kind of like earn their wings on that situation. So that'll be coming up by the end of the year and the first of next year for that. And the second part is a week and a half ago, I was invited to a meeting in Plymouth on a battery storage plant that's projected to be in our fire district. It's not inside the Culver zoning, but it will affect us if it does. They reached out to me and I spent three hours there to get me on board with what, if and when, or if it shows up, what our fire department will have to do, what we'll have to, what they'll have to train us on. And, and just, it's a preliminary. I got a feeling you're going to see a lot more of this. Don't think it's going to go away. I don't think the town can really say anything about it. It's a township and a county thing because it's outside of our zoning, but it is in our fire district. So I just want you guys to know this all has started. I'm talking $250 million plant. I've been in excess of $200, $20 million a year in tax revenue from this plant. I don't, I don't know how that'll affect us. I've tried to touch that base, but I don't know exactly where that would be for Union Township or. for union township or the call fire department or the call EMS or the call police. That is, they are all same uh, in that district. So I'm sure they're going to be scheduling meetings uh, for information for public who know what to expect or what they, you know, what they want, what they're going to do and what people will see. A lot of question answers. There was very few of us at this meeting, but it was very informative to me because I knew zero about it to start with. So just an FYI for you guys, they're going to be probably trying to come here, whether they come to the town board meeting or do an uptown on their own because it really doesn't affect you. They want to, they want to get the community to know what's going on. They just don't want people sticking signs in the yard saying yea and nay and not being informed to make their judgments on it. So that's all, that's all it was this time. And the next time we'll be a little more in depth. They'll be a little closer to this. And, and I'm sure within two years' time, I have a feeling it'll probably be starting.
Gary, who chaired the meeting? Who called the meeting?
Uh, John Grolick or he called it for us in Plymouth. I, I didn't figure out why we were in Plymouth, but
Right.
because even on our mutually agreement that you guys said I could start working on, we've got that in. We don't have it a hundred percent done, but even that area is not in that mutually agreement. But as a plant, what this is, they would be like an automatic call someone to be happened at this plant. So there's a lot of questions people will ask. I know that. It was very informative. They were very on the ball with what was going on and I, and I don't know. You know, we have no qualms of saying yes or no about what it's going to be and
Thanks, Gary.
Yep. And that's it.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Police, Wayne.
Well, I've got two or three things.
All right.
I'm going to give you the standouts first. Now, we've discussed uh, for each name of car, I want to go over the made a couple of trips before buying some cars and first page, it gives you basically itemized uh, policy you're looking at. They will find brand new these twenty two left over brand new. They're also warranted the same. Then we're saving about close to six thousand dollars per car. Uh, versus buying a uh, twenty three. Uh, the car prices have gone up. But this might be a way to go. States and money. I'd like to lean toward the idea, because we're looking at a a sign patrol car, take home car policy. Uh, just buy two cars. Uh, if it's possible and I'll further explain some of that as we go along here. In conjunction with the car price, uh, as you can see on the first list, you know, it's thirty seven five, uh, which is over five thousand dollars less than that twenty three. Said still a brand new vehicle. They're warranty. Sit there forever.
Or any starts when you need, you take, do it everything.
Made a couple of trips to up to Fort Dodge is where we found the vet. I've talked to Ford. Uh, they're talking four to six months for the order one. They don't have that in season. This guy has stepped on this a lot. Bath and uh, SUVs, maybe he's got quite a few, but they come and go. Department, he sold some, I mean, it sold a hundred of them. Just one shot. So you just don't know. Uh, in conjunction with that, outfit the car. That's the second half of this. You'll see on the third page of that, uh, what the twenty three is costing. Do that in there to show you, you see the difference. Twenty two, both twenty three grand and the twenty three dollar. Uh, spent some time a lot with the outfitter. I found an outfitter that can outfit the car. The good thing that this outfitter is normally we buy could outfit and everything, car camera, radio, computer system. Uh, normally we buy you for the, the camera system through another vendor, uh, which we use WatchGuard. Uh, that camera system is normally close to three thousand dollars more. I can get everything through this guy. With radio, camera systems, computer system, outfitted, everything we all at one.
Comparable with the same foot.
Same foot.
Same foot.
Same foot. And savings and buying the camera system, radio system, computer, outfitting car lights, all that. At the purchase of car, I think we could save sixteen thousand five hundred some dollars. There's about eleven thousand dollars for the cars. And versus buying twenty threes, uh, we're saving about twenty seven hundred sixty five dollars for camera system, uh, over twenty eight hundred dollars for the radio. Versus buying a few what's mobile one and camera company we buy our cameras from. So they're all warranted. Everything's just like we would buy it from them except we're getting it from him a lot.
So that would bring the price of the thirty seven thousand five hundred dollar car up to what?
The seven about fifty four thousand. For each vehicle. Yes. What is, I mean, I think we got the funding for one car right now. Sure, if we could come up with the extra rather than wait until next year, we could save ourselves additional money. That's what I was looking at.
And he has more than one of the twenty twenty twos under you?
Yes, okay. Off to him. Uh, he emailed yesterday and they're there. Have to wait to hear from us. New timeframe that it would be before you actually have them down here. By the time they're outfitted and set, how long would it take? Uh, we'd have to take from up there. Our outfitter is going to be west or east of Warsaw. Okay. Do cops here? Two weeks, three weeks, four weeks outfitted? Yeah, three weeks. Okay.
So within a month you would have.
So within a month.
Yeah, whatever the timeframe uh, for the transaction up there, then three to four weeks maybe at this hour.
I answered the question. Thank you. The outfits about uh, like a big assembly line. The outfits of like seven to ten cars is, so they all work on. So I'm out of this one. Kind of, I'm not sure if you have any questions regarding that.
Karen?
We have thirty eight thousand dollar budget of the purchase of a new car this year. And we said, said thirty eight thousand dollars in the budget for next year. So if you want to cross out thirty eight thousand dollars for next year, do an additional appropriation to be in the next year. We got money for, we, we budgeted some money for equipment.
I would also like to see us pose the question to CRC since I believe um, they have the ability to to purchase vehicles for emergency services.
And that has just changed since like
Yeah, the, the people.
To be able to do it. Yes, I want that whatever.
Yes.
Because it was
There were a couple of years where they said no.
Yes.
Just
Yeah.
So is your thought to do one through, one through CRC or S C R C, I mean? Um, what's your thought process?
That would be one option.
Okay. I mean, that's a question.
Yeah.
It's So it's either A or B. One option is one vehicle and B is two vehicles.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill, what's your thoughts? That it. I'll go along with whatever the consensus is. Valley?
We could do, as Karen said, an additional appropriation because, I mean, I I don't see how we'd get away from not doing an additional appropriation. And you could definitely ask CRC whether they have funds or not. But if we draw it out of next year's and budget and put it in basically this year as an additional appropriation.
Yeah.
Something.
That's fine too.
Yeah.
Bill?
Well, since we're going to have five police officers eventually fully staffed, we can find vehicles if they're taking them home, so. This is kind of urgent. It gets fixed because of the turnover, the critical. It's such a good deal. So um,
if we can get away to save us a lot of money.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
I understand.
So um, if we get to appropriations or CRC or whatever, whatever means we do it, that's, I think, are all of the goal. If five guys, and we will have five guys.
Five people.
Five people.
Five people.
Of course, all right, sorry.
Officers.
Officers.
The problem you got with police officers are everybody else has sent them home with take home cars. And if you're not sending them home with take home.
That's right.
Only know that. Your pool is
You're not going to track them.
Yeah.
Yeah. We know that.
All right. I'd say I like it all, but what's I would make a motion that we go after purchasing two cars and then just work out the details.
Yeah, there are just two ways to do it.
That's right. Yeah, Mr. Githens makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Two cars.
Definitely had a whole issue. Have to sort out the detail.
Right. I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Thank you. Wayne. Good job. Anything else?
Uh, the other thing is we're taking apps till fifteenth, which is this Friday. Uh, obviously since we lost someone Saturday, we're going to re-advertise, open it up. Uh, we'll be just certified. We'll take everybody, you know, to fly. We'll go through backgrounds and stuff. That's where we're at where it's same old thing everywhere. Everybody's having problems with people.
Sounds like the plan.
Other than that, I don't have anything else, though.
All right, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
It's your due diligence and the money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Ships recovered twenty four seconds.
He's not worried about somebody behind the driving.
Amber, are you online for Park? Bob Utilities.
He's not.
Oh, he's not. It's, okay. Police report.
I have four uh, claims about twenty five hundred dollars per year of people. Alexander Chemical Corporation for two thousand five hundred thirty, thirty two dollars and sixty eight cents a week. That is for twenty plus bolster plant. Creative custom finishes, five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, and that is for the lighthouse repairs. J W C Environmental, twenty four thousand seven dollars. That's for equipment for the sewer department. And finally, Thomas excavating welding, twenty six thousand nine hundred forty seven dollars and fifty five cents. And that is the last payment for the parking rental project.
Do we approve the claim that's over twenty five hundred dollars?
Mr. West makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Karen, what else?
As I mentioned earlier, I just submit a public notice to the Department of Local Government Finance concerning our budget. Um, that is available online at the DLGF website and it is posted out here. Um, the public hearing is set for September twenty sixth and anticipate the final passage of the twenty twenty four budget on October tenth. And then um, so I've got a couple more things. Uh, it, when we're uh, in the budget process, um, I had a, I had a basically placeholder for budget for our health insurance. Um, got that back. I believe it's seven point one is our increase. I do need to confirm with them that the plans that we're currently offering for what we're going to offer next year and that the contribution for employees remains at a dollar and then twenty five dollars per paycheck for families. So no changes if you're okay with that.
I'll assume you need to have that information.
I need to submit it to them. So I apologize. It's
So do you
But there's no change. I mean
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's in the projected budget or it's covered by
It's already been, yes, it's already been budgeted.
So you need a motion from us to
I just want to confirm that we're operating the same for, same
Yeah, just
Yeah.
Same packages.
I'd make a motion that based upon the, the proposal that we've received for a seven point one percent increase in employee health costs that we have proven accept that and it's in our twenty twenty four budget.
Been moved by Mr. West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Townwide Garage Sales are September twenty ninth and thirtieth.
I have somebody that's looking.
September twenty, thirtieth. If you want to be included on the list, please get your, to be invited to my sixth, uh, tent at September twenty sixth. And then you set Townwide Cleanup for the weekend of October fourteenth. Um, we're going to do it the same way we did in the spring. That worked out fairly well. All you have to do is put your stuff out at the curb over that weekend and boss guys will come through and pick it up on. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Karen's report.
Uh, yes, sir. Just a quick question and a couple of quick FYIs and a non-legal note. Did Bob Keener's office speak with you guys about the lawsuit at uh?
Amber and I have met with him. We provided some more information. Most recently yesterday and
Okay. I meant to ask you that. So thank you for that. And uh, Ken already really reported on Dune Housing, which was uh, I guess uh, covered. And there's been no news on the uh, four fifteen Lake Shore uh, uh, matters with VZA or the Plan Commission. And then kind of the non-legal note is I'm sure you all appreciate that you continue to ask your treasure to financial magic, so. I hope you appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. West.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the room uh, here for Anyone in the room uh here for utility shut off or ordinance violation? Anyone online? Hearing none. Citizen input. Yes, sir. Link Stallings 506 East Lake Shore Drive. Judge Palmer this afternoon issued his decision.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he issued it in favor of the plan commission and in favor of the VCA. So um, there's a sign on the fence and it's staked out and we expect to dig either late this week or early this week. Very good. Good. Congratulations.
What are you doing? Watching the uh online stuff?
I think I'm late this afternoon.
I didn't notice of it. I didn't notice of it.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, please.
This is Gardner. I live at Site 13 Academy Road. And I wanted to again address the town council about the hazardous rocks at the playground. Uh, this is the fourth meeting that I've come to to address this concern. And to date, there hasn't been anything to fix the the actual hazard that the rocks pose. Uh, you can see they're directly adjacent to the playground between the playground and the sweep set. And you can see how sharp these these rocks are uh for our children that are playing playground. Uh, there's my 30-year-old finding on one. And you can see that, you know, these these are, you know, very dangerous to children who are not aware of their surroundings, who don't have the spatial awareness or, you know, awareness in general that adults do. And um, you know, they're surrounded by concrete bunches. And so I wanted to bring this up again because inaction is not an option here. It is negligent to leave these the way they are. And I would like to ask you to to please do something that allocate the resources necessary to keep our our children safe here. They're very sharp.
Thank you. Anyone else? Citizen input. Yes, sir.
Sir.
Oh, no, I thought Patty raised her and she's not a, she's not a sir.
There's gentlemen back there.
Just got a, just a question. How do we get uh gravel to the alleyways a few hundred yards? Where was your house located?
I'm going to South League.
Thank you. I missed that.
Ma'am, you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, okay.
About the gravel, there's huge potholes at alleyway. There's some cars that are having issues down there and other old trucks that burn throughout the street. Have any kind of garage. That's sort of pretty cumbersome driving down there.
It's worse toward the Winterfield side versus the city.
Actually threw down that this evening or this afternoon rather than didn't actually didn't run into any potholes, but we can certainly, you know, have Bob take a look.
Sure. Sure. Definitely. Take a look tomorrow. Thank you.
Anyone online for citizen input? Hearing none. Counsel, I'm sorry. Yes, Patty.
East Lake Shore Drive. I know I've spoken before, six months ago about the stones. Uh, I understand it's it's an architectural thing. They flow from one end of the park to the next end. They flow right through this children's and their young children and our grandchild, Millie, great-grandchild, missed it by this much. She's almost two. Her mother was there. I was there and you know, it slopes down. If you've gone to it, slopes down and then the the stones are here. And I really think and I've I've talked to several of you and I talked to Karen. She said the cost is ridiculously expensive to move those somewhere else within the park. Understand that. I don't know. My other thought was to place some kind of um a foamed cushion. You know, on it. Yeah, to cover the whole thing, at least the top and four sides. And in that way, if if somebody hit that, uh, child would hit that. There's some protection. I know you did try and chip away at the top, but she went right for the side. But luckily she didn't make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council issues. Rich?
Nothing.
Bill? Nothing. Dolly?
I don't have anything this evening.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
So most.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens, say of Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.